It's Thursday, June 1st, 2017. This is the third of three budget and finance committee meetings. A roll call, Council President Kendros Vasquez.
Here.
Vice Chairman David Abdu.
Present.
And I'm the Chair Mark LaPlante. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Evening, councilors. Thank you for being here this evening and for your attendance the last two nights as well. I see Mr. DePina is here, so we'll count him as present. We're going to start off this evening with, let's start off with the recreation department. It's our first one. We should get that one out of the way, I think, fairly quickly. And thanks to our secretary, we have the pages easy to access. You'll find that budget on page 157. Mr. Ortiz, welcome, sir.
Good evening, councilors.
Feel free, Mr. Ortiz, to give us highlights in your budget and anything you think we should know about it.
Well, we have three items, line items, that I think you should know about. It's the recreation director that was added onto the budget. I have been performing the job for the last seven years. I've been doing director, assistant director, program coordinator, and administrative assistant. So that's one item that's in there. Also, an administrative assistant. We'd like to add an administrative assistant. Like Mr. Abdu said before, I'm a one-man show and I definitely could use some help. And as far as I understand, the administrative assistant will be working with me four hours, and they'll be covering the Human Rights Commission and the Disability Commission some other time. And the third item is the salaries and wages was temporary. That's for my summer staff. And the reason why that went up because on January 1st, the minimum wage went up from $10 to $11. And then you have vacation, which is contractual, and longevity, which is also contractual. You also have the electricity. And that electricity cover is for the kids. The ball fields for the youth. The adults pay for their own ball fields. Then you have office supplies and operator supplies.
Is that it, Mr. Ortiz?
That's it.
Okay. So I'll start off with a very quick question. So there's an increase, obviously, in the director's position. With this newfound increase, will there be anything different that residents can expect from personnel who are in that position? Or is it the same level of, what should the expectations be, if any? Anything different?
We're going to be creating, especially for the youth, one of the things that I like to do is try to get the parents more involved. Because right now, we're working with Central Catholic, and we're going to start a lacrosse for the youth. We're also going to start a, we work with Mary Magdalene Hockey League. We're going to start a youth soccer league on Saturdays. We do have enough adult leagues for now. So, and we're working with Goncalo de Leon, which is on West Street. He runs the youth soccer on Sunday mornings. And also, I believe that we're going to see more participants in our summer program. Last year, we had 300 participants. And this year, I hear there's not going to be any summer school. So those numbers are going to go up high. So we'll be serving-
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand it. There's not going to be what this year?
No summer school. They're only going to have four schools open for summer. So those kids have to find somewheres to go, and most likely, they'll be coming to us. I spoke to-
They're not. Don't mind us. Yeah, we're just commenting on your comment. Okay, so, okay, so a couple of just brief questions. One is, two things, actually. One is in South, the O'Connell Park, South Common, otherwise known. There is, as you know, there's going to be some new project there to overhaul that park. And my question is regarding the floor hockey ice rink. There is a plan to keep that there.
Correct.
I don't know how many floor hockey players we have in the city of Lawrence. I want to get your take, because it's going to have to be maintained.
Right.
So give me your take as to that item on that property.
Right now, we have four teams in the hockey league. And what the plans are, we're going to make that a multi-use rink. So we're going to play soccer along with hockey on that rink. So if you go, I don't know if you went by the park today, but they're planting some trees. If you go along Oscar Street and along Salem Street, they planted like 37 trees, and they started today over at Salem, the O'Connell.
Okay. And my last question before I turn it over to my colleagues. And I appreciate all the work that you're doing, number one, in maintaining a recreation apartment. It's important in our city to have that facet. It makes our city a better city when we can offer programs like you offer. So I think that's important. On the flip side of that, the concerns that I hear, and I've told you in times past, regards the, some of the, and it's being focused on the adult leagues. And what, some of the biggest concerns that I've heard from residents is the public drinking, the trunks open, the car doors open, the radios blaring inside a residential area, and then when the games are completed, off they go, and the trash remains there. As well as trash thrown throughout the, out the common. I bring that to your attention again. I just want to get a sense as to what can be done to try to curb that behavior.
Excuse me. Right now, what I'm doing is I'm talking to all the leagues that use our ball fields, the adult leagues. We're giving them bags, and it's working because we're, you know, picking up the trash. We are, we did talk to the chief of police, and we, I gave him a schedule of where all the games will be played, the adults, which is the Frost, the O'Connell, the O'Neill, the Playstead 1 and 2. And he is going to step up the patrol. So I think if we make one or two arrests, I think the message will be sent out. They'll get the message. But I have, we did talk to the police department about it.
Have you had problems in the past getting the police department's attention to deal with this issue? Or have they been receptive when you've contacted them to be responsive?
They've been receptive during the summer times. The motorcycles are out. So they hit the Playstead a lot because there's some drugs used in the back. So, and they hit the South Common and also the Frost. So whenever I call them and I said, you know, we have a little issue, they're there for us.
Let me lend my office to you, if there's anything I can do, because it does have a tremendous impact on the quality of life for the residents who live especially in areas like O'Connell, where there's houses right nearby. So if I could offer any assistance in trying to improve the lives of those people that I represent, who you're trying to assist, let me know, and I'll be happy to do what I can.
Thanks.
Are there any comments or questions about the budget or anything else on recreation? Mr. Abdu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items through you. Mr. Ortiz, what is the policy with respect to the various sports leagues and locking facilities up at the end of the night? Is there, is there a, I realize every park looks different. Every city recreational facility looks different. But is, do we have a standing policy with respect to these facilities?
The only, the only policy we do have is where the lights must be off by 10:30, the lights. But versus Mount Vernon, they do have a gate. So I believe after their games are done, they do lock it up. South Lawrence East is doing the same thing. But the other complexes, they're open. So it's really like the O'Neill 1 and 2, Playstead 1 and 2. The Howard, they do the same thing also. So the little lakes, we also do.
So, thank you. And you and I worked together for nine years, my involvement in baseball, which I've now stepped away from, but I'm still, obviously, the counselor for that district, and I'm still involved with the league to a certain degree. One of the issues we have, and Counsel Plant touched on it where he's at, but at Mount Vernon, we have a waste issue, which we're trying to manage ourselves. But we also have needles. Like they're, obviously, it's a city.
Right.
Regional, state, and national issue. This park, which is the only one in my district besides the Weatherby, offers a very good place to either have drug deals or do drugs, because those lights are out. South Lawrence West usually closes up shop by 9 o'clock. It's pitch black. The gates open, and so you can go down there. We had the police here last night, and I told a story of how just last week, on the way home from council, I personally saw the drug deal going down. Got the police, they showed up, sure enough. I just, I asked, only because from a public safety standpoint. I want to be able to work with the league to possibly lock that gate.
Yep.
I know people go down there, and they walk their dogs, and it serves many purposes other than baseball. But I would like to work with you, because I know you're the keeper of the keys.
Yep.
But I want to make sure that we don't give fertile territory for people to be dealing drugs or possibly overdosing and dying at our parks. So I know that's heavy. That's not recreation, but my, it's a statement, not a question, I guess. I did leave with who manages the gate. The second item is baseball in our city. I encourage you to, and offer myself up, like Counsel Plant did, as assistants. A lot of our organized leagues are suffering. And it's not anything to do with the parks. The city's invested a lot of money in the parks. You're doing a great job managing them. We have lights. So it's not through a lack of resource or a lack of infrastructure by the city. It's a volunteer organization. And we all know that volunteer organizations are what you put into them, right? It's parents stepping up, it's sisters, brothers, aunts, uncles. And all I know is, in my experience with you and many of the league presidents, that we have, we have a very young city. And we have a city of youth that are brought up in baseball, whether it be from, you know, and obviously, in this city, we have a lot of children that were born in the Dominican Republic, born in Puerto Rico.
Yep.
Baseball's in their blood. And, you know, and I know we've had this conversation before, Lawrence, Lawrence could be a heck of a, heck of a powerhouse in baseball.
I agree.
If we didn't lose these kids to either A, just atrophy, right, just falling away, or to these private organizations that are popping up everywhere.
The academies.
And I don't begrudge them.
Yep.
So I would just, I hope that this council concurs with the mayor's proposal here. I think you would be a great director. I did say last week, you are a one-man show.
Yep.
And despite these additions, I think you'll be a one-man show for a while longer. But I would just ask of you, because of my love for baseball, that if you have any ideas how we can maintain the leagues we have now, we've lost Prospect Hill, we've lost Tower Hill.
Tower Hill, yep.
And I know the rest of us are on life support.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
But whether it's getting, I always likened it to very tribal, but if we can get all the tribes to get together, you know, we could have a heck of a program here in Lawrence.
I think, I think next February, March, we should all sit down.
Absolutely.
And bring all the leagues together and make that powerhouse. And travel, travel to other cities and showcase our talents.
Agreed. Because I think it'll make the recreational director's job easier.
Yep.
Because I know the summer, you know, there's summer leagues, these kids, and it's really cheap. Baseball is a cheap sport. It really is.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And it would make your job easier, and frankly, make our jobs easier, because we're voting on open gyms and basketball courts. We're looking to get these kids out of gangs or out of the streets. And recreation is your portfolio, and it's right up their alley. And I think if we make an assertive effort in this area.
We'll definitely work on it.
I have no doubt you would be that leader, and we'd be more than willing to assist. So with that being said, Mr. LaPlante, stare inside of my head. I will conclude my comments, and thank you for the service that you do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else's head you want to be stared at at this point? No? Oh, Mr. Vasquez.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Ortiz. For the admin assistant, you mentioned that it will be halftime at the recreation department, one-fourth of the disability commission, and one-fourth in which?
I think it's human rights.
For the temporary workers, how many workers are you able to get with $32,000? That's not a lot of money.
14.
14 with $32,000. I don't know how you do it, honestly.
And, and that's, that's a very hard job, because we have to take the kids, we take the kids on field trips, we take them to the boathouse. You mind if I plug it in, my summer program?
Please.
So it starts July 5th, and it ends August 9th. So Monday, 9:30 to 2:30, Monday through Friday. So on Mondays and Wednesdays, we take the kids to the boathouse. On Tuesdays, we're at the park all day. On Thursdays, we take the kids to the Weatherby School for a movie or show. And Fridays, we go on field trips. This year, we're taking them to Academy Lanes, we're taking them to Museum of Science, we're taking them skating, and we're also taking them to Water Country.
And this is a completely free program?
A free program. The only thing we do is we charge very minimal for the field trips. Last year, if you had a child in the program, probably it cost you $35 for the whole six weeks.
Wow, terrific.
And we do feed them also. So we walk them to the nearest school, and they get fed. And we do, we do have partners also. We have UMass Amherst, Groundwork Lawrence, the Girl Scouts, the school department, and the boathouse.
When we are here in the city and not doing any field trips, where are the kids mostly located? Which parks are they utilizing?
We have two parks. We have the North Common, right across the street from the senior center, and the other one is the Riverfront Park. We have one in the north and one in the south.
Okay. Have we ever considered bringing them into the neighborhood parks?
We did before. We had, we headed to Tower Hill. We had like five parks. But then you notice that in those parks, the Tower Hill, you probably had like five or six kids, and then you have two staff members there. So the parks weren't really, so we figured, so let's try this. And it also helps on a bus.
Okay. No, I think that sounds like a reasonable. I just wish that we could give more life during the summer months to certain neighborhood parks that don't necessarily have a, you know, a baseball field or opportunity to even play soccer, you know, like the one that you mentioned in Tower Hill, West Street.
Right, the Howard Park.
Yeah. So the cert, certain parks in the, in the city do not have certain amenities that other parks do, and as a result of that, we probably do not use it as often. I just wish we had, you know, an avenue. I know you and I spoken about something, and I wish we could get it done this summer. So I'm going to get at it.
Okay.
I have an intern who'll assist you.
Okay.
So I'll get her to work with you.
Okay.
For that project and see if we could make it.
Yeah. We can go to different parks and work on that.
And maybe do it in a park that is, doesn't have the amenities that the other parks do in the city. So I appreciate everything you're doing with the limited amount of funds that you receive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. If there's no other questions, I will thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you.
As a reminder, June 13th is our scheduled date to have the public hearing and the expected vote for this budget. So I hope to see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is the city clerk's office and the various departments within the clerk's supervision. I'd like to show a warm welcome to Clerk Maloney.
Good evening, thank you.
I noticed earlier today, Mr. Maloney, you've actually sent us an email with an update.
And this is a hard copy of that email.
Thank you. And the budget, this budget can be started on page 53, I believe. Feel free to begin, Mr. Maloney.
Well, the highlights every other year seem to be about the same, pretty much. The clerk's office and the election division pretty much goes in and out with city elections every other year, which is a drastic increase in the budget. I shouldn't say drastic, but an increase anyway in the obligations that we pick up that usually the state does during state elections. Beginning on page 54, however, looking at the items of concern, certainly a council advertising. The allocation is for $12,000. The clerk's office generally ranges and is highly dependent upon how much work the council does.
And Clerk, may I stop you right there? Are you suggesting that we should work off the handout you gave us?
I'm sorry? Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's why, you know, it's the same as the email, it's what I'm looking at, and essentially is an analysis of some items of concern.
And there's, and just one more thing, and I'll allow you to continue in a second. Are there any changes in the numbers from what the handouts you provided versus what we have in our actual budget?
As you know, the, you know, the council cannot vote to increase any amounts. But I just want to make you aware that there are items that need to be addressed. I did discuss those with the finance director, and I'll try to be brief.
No, but my point is, my point, I'll make, I'll be more clear. The point is, is that this sheet that you gave us here, these sheets, the numbers that are on these sheets, the actual underlying numbers, are all the same. They're identical.
Oh, yeah. I just copied it off of the budget that was submitted. I didn't know that.
Just want to be clear on that.
I didn't understand your question.
I'll stop interrupting you. Go ahead, Mr. Maloney.
No, that's fine. The council advertising, as you know, is dependent upon how much work you folks do. So, you know, a $12,000 allocation will likely go up to somewhere about $15,000 to $18,000, again, depending upon the work you folks do. And that's noted on the sheet. Books and subscriptions. I highlight that item for two different reasons. A $7,000 allocation is fine if things were to stay the same. As you know, the clerk's office has now assumed additional duties as a record access officer to manage all public requests, public record requests throughout the city. So what I've asked the finance department to allow for is a management tool in conjunction with a request presented by the city attorney in order to, if anything, avoid noncompliance or averve noncompliance. In other words, to comply with the public records request. With a firm that provides as much access to public records directly without involvement of the records access officer, that expense is quite hefty. It's about a $7,000 outlay in a $5,000 initial, if it were to be adopted now for the last six weeks, we'll say, of this fiscal year. That was presented and doesn't appear anywhere in the budget. I add it in. It's kind of an option. If it were ever presented, I would suggest to the council that, and certainly have prized the administration, that the obligations attendant to the public records request now entail litigation for anything that is not met. And there could be fines and liability that are attendant to it. This is no longer a one-man operation, although, you know, we're doing our best to handle whatever records come into the office citywide. The other item I draw to your attention of the council appears on page 56. Printing and mailing for elections, as I stated earlier, is a function of whether or not it's a city election year or a state election year. This upcoming fiscal year being a city election year, certainly the mayor, city council, Lawrence School Committee, Greater Lawrence Vocational School is up. These obligations, my estimates, consistent with past year estimates, is going to be about $33,000, representing a possible underfunding of about $8,000. The next item in that, on that page, 5380, I've asked to infuse about another $2,000 to carry expenses for the upcoming mayoral inauguration, city council inauguration, Lawrence School Committee inauguration. $500 will just about pay for the flowers, maybe. Page 58, the data processing item, line item, allocation of $14,000. By contract, the city is obligated to pay $14,500. So that's short about $500. This other item is the annual listing. That's gone up by contract to $900. It's a couple hundred dollars there. And the copy of the contract appears at the very last page. And again, I only draw these items to your attention. I don't, I don't think that there's as much that the council can do to require additional money. The legislative arm, as I know, as you know, is only allowed to essentially make cuts, not to increase. I did have that discussion briefly this afternoon with the director, finance director Ryan Ello, who suggests that there are amelotive methods that could be used. Essentially, what'll require me to do, if it stays the way it is, is to administer by redemption, until, work until I run out of money, which will be about January, February, in those particular areas. And when I do, we'll be back for a supplement, certainly, certainly a supplement consistent with what the finance director would suggest. And that's about, that's about all I have. Everything else is really off the books. We could use more staff. Every year, I come to the council telling you, we're two people short in both offices to meet the minimum obligations of the office. People forego vacations, time off, things of that nature. And that is, that's been going on now for at least eight years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. A lesser important issue, if there's a vote on flowers, you can count me out. Don't think we need the flowers for the next election for the inauguration.
Counsel, I'd be glad to get you flowers. I can't wait for the inauguration if that happens.
For one guy's vote, you can delete that for, you know, if I'm lucky enough to be back here next year, you can certainly delete that.
A boot in the air.
So are there any questions? Mr. Abdu, do you have a question?
I do, as a matter of fact. Mr. Maloney, the numbers that we see here in the mayor's budget, are those your numbers or are they Mr. Ryan Ello's numbers?
I'm not sure what numbers you're referring to. The penciled-in ones are my numbers.
No, the type-written ones.
The type-written ones are the administration's recommendations.
Mr. Ryan Ello, can you please come to the podium? The items that the clerk has brought to our attention tonight, we're all very familiar with. You know, we've all read about the public records requests. We know his election responsibilities. The picture he paints, what is your plan? Was your plan to come back to us with supplemental in January?
I think he just needs to make a, I think, a request to the mayor for the public record software. I think that's the main thing that is missing out of this budget. I think that's what he indicated earlier. He needs some software. I don't know how we can help him out with that. Get a quote, see what the, see what the software costs, and see if we can, we might be able to squeeze something out of the IT budget, find some alternative methods. But if we need some software to handle public records law, you know, we'll have to, you know, see if the mayor can find some money or within his existing budget. He usually does have money left over at the end of the year. I don't know whether, you know, next year, it sounds like he's starting short. So I'm going to see what I can do at the end of this year to transfer some money into his account. Maybe we can purchase the software from some year-end transfers.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. But if these items were known, why not work them out before we come here tonight and I ask these questions?
Are you asking?
I'm asking you.
Yeah. The mayor has a directive for everybody to level fund their budget. I think this budget is up a little bit, but that was the directive to level fund your budget, and you have to manage within.
So I'm certainly not- So, I'm certainly not trying to do the mayor's job. He's got his hands full. However, I understand balance, I understand level fund, but for instance, all kidding aside about the flowers, an inauguration happens every other year. Now frankly, I don't know why we need to spend a cent on it. We could all meet here, get sworn in, and have some punch out in the hallway, but nonetheless, it's tradition, whatever. But it's no surprise. It's something we know is going to happen in January. We know the election's gonna happen in November. These are unavoidable, no matter how much the public might want to avoid both. What, it just doesn't seem, you know, the philosophical debate about personnels between the clerk, yourself, and the mayor, but there's certain things that are vivid, at least to me, as one vote, and there's nothing I can do about it because, as the clerk pointed out, all we can do is cut his budget, and I'm not of the mind to do that. I just, I'm curious as to why we don't have these conversations before it comes out.
Well, I'll just point you to page fifty-four, for example. If you look at the FY15 actual expenses for just the clerk section of the budget, on page fifty-four, you see the total line. We spent two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, four-eighty, in FY15. In FY16, we spent two-twenty-seven, zero-sixty-six. We've budgeted two-thirty-nine in FY17, of which we've only spent one-eighty-eight, and assuming all of it'll be spent, next year we still have two-fifty-eight in the budget. So, my point is that, you know, maybe that particular line item, for example, advertising might be short, but some of the line items in this budget or within the clerk's budget, because you don't vote on each city clerk election and annual listing separately, we vote on just the city clerk, so he could transfer within his annual listing to the city clerks if he's short on advertising, for example. And I'll direct you to the next page, fifty-six, which is the printing and mailing and, which is a concern. We may be short on printing and mailing, and we may be short on the other purchase of services for fifteen hundred. But if you look, in FY15, we only spent two-hundred-and-sixty thousand. We did spend three-hundred-and-ten thousand in FY16 in total, and, and I think that's because of the presidential election, so there's an extra thirty thousand spent on the election. And then so far this year, we've only spent two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. We have roughly three-hundred thousand or two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand budgeted. So I suspect, and usually is, at the end of the year, between all of his accounts, there usually is some excess. So my suggestion is for, the software seems to be the immediate concern. There may be some money this year, and we're, I put an item on the agenda today for a placeholder for year-end transfers, and that's what I discussed with Bill earlier today. Maybe we can transfer within his accounts, put it into the software line, and see if we can get a quote and encumber it out of this year's funds, so he'd have it available for next year. That would be a strategy I would suggest. Same thing with advertising. If he thinks, I think he, I think advertising isn't too bad. He thinks he might be a little bit short in advertising, but again, he may have, in one of his divisions, some excess funds that he is not going to use between now and June thirtieth. We could capture those funds and encumber something for next year. So that's my suggestion to help out in, in next year. As a reminder, you know, this budget is very tight, so we're, this is our opportunity this year on transfers to make transfers within accounts to, particularly in this, this division where he has three different divisions, make some transfers, and maybe that'll help him out next year.
Well, through you, Mr. Chairman, though I would note, things are tight because we choose, we're going with the zero percent revenue increase, and decisions were made, and that's fine. We'll live with those, right? But I also would caution, when we look at, when you cite the total for the city clerk's office, and we go across and we look at something like 2015, and then we look at 2018, and there's a huge spike, you and I both know, we, we can't do that because they're apples and oranges. I mean, most of it, the increases, a substantial amount of those increases in the intervening two years, are the fact that he's got this high severance number, he's got a longevity, and all these are, as you know, contractually obligated, or someone's retiring. Obviously, we haven't asked that question yet, but these are items beyond anyone's control, and they're, they're previously predetermined, if you will. So it's, to look at the bottom line, yes, he's got a substantial increase over 2015, but if you remove the contractual obligations, personnel, longevity, and all that good stuff, now we're kind of getting down to a point where he's marginally higher.
I wouldn't agree with that. I think there's usually, there usually is money in other line items within that budget that will get him through the year. I don't remember transfer.
That's not, that's not agreeing with me.
Yeah.
All your suggestions, you've got a plan to deal with it. So, you're, you're disagreeing with me because you've got a plan to move monies around. I'm just telling you, if you look at these and the numbers, you cite the bottom line, if you remove all the contractual obligations and you remove all of the necessary personnel dollars, the top, the personal services, and you look over in the eighteen, you know, you look at longevity, year over year, longevity's the same, but, you know, vacation is tripled. I don't know why that is, but then you look at severance, it's up twenty-three thousand dollars.
Right.
That's obviously someone's leaving his office, or someone's anticipated to be leaving his office.
Right.
These are.
Those are contractual, but the rest of the line items are not. And those are just, and again, I'll just point to the first one that appears here, which is account fifty-two forty, repairs and maintenance. We have zero expended in fifteen, zero expended in sixteen, but we budgeted a thousand this year, and we have a thousand in there for next year. So we have an extra thousand right there that may or may not be spent. Hasn't been spent in, in three, in three consecutive years, but there's still a thousand. And if you go to the next line item, we have, again, another thousand budgeted, but only a hundred-and-forty-nine dollars spent in fifteen, three hundred bucks in sixteen, and a hundred-and-fifty so far this year. So we have eight-hundred-and-fifty so far left in that line item this year. So all of those, other than personal services, which are not contractual, there's quite a bit of leeway when you take them all combined within the three divisions. So although he might be, we might, the advertising line item might be a little short, while obviously, printing and mailing and purchases, and repairs and maintenance, and the clerk's division might be a little over, so we could move some money to those other line items. And the clerk can do that without council approval next year, if necessary. So there is some, you know, in many of his line items, there might be a line item short, but there's other line items that are underspent, and he can, we can avail themselves, or he can avail themselves of those funds next year without coming to the council, and he may have to come to the council if he have to, has to move it from a certain category to another category. But oftentimes, departments can make transfers within, they just need the mayor, the finance director, and the fiscal overseer's approval to make a line item transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan Ello, for your comments, your answers. I would just close my comments by saying that elections are never an easy cycle in the city, and it usually has to do with hardware, ballots, and things that are, items that can be improved upon every other year, and it typically takes money. I don't see a commitment to improving elections through this budget, and I intend on being one of those people on the ballot in the fall, but it's not me who gets penalized, it's not any of these gentlemen that gets penalized, it's, it's the voter that has to either wait in line for a broken machine, something's fouled up. There's, there's human error there, but a lot of it is the city's commitment to supporting one of its responsibilities. This is one of them. That is the reason why I'm focused on this. No, just respect to Mr. Maloney. He brings, I can go back to my last time I was on the council. Personnel is, is a matter, and I, again, I leave that amongst you folks and the mayor, but there's certain unavoidable things, and I just feel that, to a certain degree, we are, we're, we're just avoiding them, and it'll end up being something the council has to deal with at our future meeting. So with that, thank you, Mr. Ryan Ello. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Here we go, and thank you very much, Clerk Maloney.
Thank you, Counselors.
We will see you next Tuesday, as we always do, and then the following Tuesday as well.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity. Have a good evening.
Have a good night. Mr. Ryan Ello, the rest of this is all under your jurisdiction, so I will let you decide the pace and the order of which, I mean, not the pace, it's, but definitely the order of which we go forward on this, so however you want to proceed.
Well, I'd like to just, I guess, review how the budget was put together real quickly. Again, so I think, just beginning on page five, that's the appropriation order for all departments, and that's the summary of what the council is going to vote on. As I just mentioned a moment ago, for the city clerk, you can see he's on page six, second section on page six, and that's what the council votes on. So if there's money needed between his annual listing or elections and the clerk's office, he can make those transfers with approval of the mayor without coming to the council. So that's what this page is that we actually vote on, and those are the line items that are within each department. And then after that section, that, that's the appropriation order through page ten. And page eleven, I think, is the most important page in the book.
Let me stop you before we get there, Mr. Ryan Ello. Just for, for the, for my edification and just for a refresher, we will not be dealing with any kind of amendments at this level. We're probably gonna send this up to the full council, as is, and offer amendments at the full council level. When we do get to the full council level on the thirteenth, just as a refresher for what we're allowed to do, there may be members here, for example, who have, they, they may think there's a better use of money that's currently in the budget, and they may want to reduce the money, because we certainly, as we know, we can't add, but we can certainly reduce. So when we get to that point, the amendment, and I'll, I'll say this, and correct me again if I'm wrong, the amendment should be, I'm not gonna pull up any particular one, because someone's gonna say, why are you picking on, a department head.
Yep.
A department, and then we will look at the fifty-one or fifty-two, which is purchase, purchase of services, or fifty-three, professional service. So we make a department, X department, and we will look to cut five thousand dollars out of professional services. And that would be the amendment. So we wouldn't go in and say, number, I don't know, just pulling one up. It would be improper to say fifty-one forty-one, which is a vacation number, for example, and say, we're gonna take out a thousand dollars out of the vacation account. We would say, if we wanted to do that, we would say, a thousand dollars out of X department, fifty-one hundred, a thousand dollars.
That's correct. You can, you can certainly cut a specific line item, but what actually gets cut is the fifty-one hundred series. Excuse me, if you cut, if you cut fifty-one, I'm looking at fifty-one forty-one, which is vacation, you could, you could certainly make a hundred dollar cut there, but really, when we post it to the budget, a hundred dollars will get cut out of personal services within that department, not specifically the vacation line item.
So this is where we're, so when, on the thirteenth, this is where we're gonna be looking, if we're looking to make any kind of reductions.
And this is where we make the.
Page five and six.
Yeah, this pages, five through ten, are where we make the note of the, of any council cuts, and we would take them out of these pages, out of one of these line items. And this is the page that gets amended and that the council would vote on. And, and usually the clerk and myself keep track of the grand total, and then you make a, you make a potential cut for a specific line item within a department, and then we adjust the total accordingly, and then you, if it all passes the council, then that total vote of the, of all of the funds is what gets recorded. So in this case, two-hundred-and-sixty-four-point-five million dollars.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Continue, please.
So just, I think page eleven and twelve is the most important piece to look at because that's basically the entire budget and how we're going to fund it. So on page eleven at the top is the operating revenues, in very rolled-up format, and then there's, for the general fund, and then the operating expenditures of the entire general fund are broken out into about ten categories, general government, public safety, education, and so on. And as you can see, the mayor's eighteen budget is, balances to zero. We plan on, revenues anticipated for this budget are two-hundred-and-sixty-four-point-five million, and we plan on spending two-hundred-and-sixty-four-point-five million. Then the, below the general fund is the parking enterprise fund, or parking garage and lots enterprise fund is the technical name of it, the airport enterprise fund, and the water and sewer enterprise fund. Then on page thirteen through, through page eighteen are the, a little more detail of what all of the revenues are. Those rolled-up revenues, which I showed you, taxes and excise, for example, on page thirteen, it's the detail of the taxes and excise. And you'll see the seventy-three-point-nine million is comprised of personal property tax, real estate tax, motor vehicle, and so on. So there's a lot more detail on page thirteen of where the revenues came from, and, and again, charges for services is one line on that previous page, and here on page fourteen is a detail of all those revenues that comprise charges for services. And again, in this budget, we have FY15 and sixteen actual, we have the revenues received through May fourth, and then we have last year's approved budget and this year's recommended So I just wanted to go through the first few pages of the, of the, of your budget books, and for those at home, this is available on the internet, it's on the website, the budget balance, and, and the beginning part of the budget is where I think a high-level look at the entire city budget. And of course, beginning on page twenty-two is the departmental budgets. The budget for the budget finance begins on page twenty-eight, and that's a, the departments that report to budget finance are the budget finance office, the comptroller's office, the purchasing department, the information technology, the assessor's office, the treasurer's office, and the collector's office. So on page twenty-eight is a rolled-up version of each of those departments, and you can see there's an increase in all of those departments of fifty-seven thousand one-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars.
And at this point, I'm gonna stop you, Mr. Ryan Ello. So, I don't wanna get too far down the road before we have a chance to talk about revenues.
Okay.
Do you plan on going back to revenues, or was that, was that your revenue, was that your revenue briefing? Did we, okay, so my sense is, let's talk about revenues now.
Yep.
So, real estate tax, that's the biggest chunk of money that we bring into the city, correct? Paid by taxpayers in the city?
Our largest revenue source is the state aid, but from taxpayers, that's the largest number, yes.
And so, the mayor in this budget has stated that there was not going to be any increase in the real estate tax. Is that correct?
There is, there will be an increase in real estate taxes related to new growth, but not the normal two-and-a-half percent increase. The normal two-and-a-half percent increase is one million six-hundred-eighty-thousand-two-seventy-two.
Slow down, slow down.
Yep.
So new growth, again?
That's the, the formula for, the formula that we use, that we're allowed to increase, is taking the last year's levy limit, which was sixty-seven-point-two million, and multiplying that by two-and-a-half percent. Sixty-seven million times two-and-a-half percent is one million six-eighty-two-seventy-two. That is the two-and-a-half percent portion that we're allowed to increase. The mayor, in this budget proposal, has chosen to make that zero and add that to the excess capacity from the previous year. New growth in this budget is estimated at one-point-six million. The last three years of new growth have exceeded one-point-six million, and last year it was one, almost one-point-nine million. So the, although new growth in last year's budget was one-point-three million, we increased it to one-point-six million. It's still two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand less than the prior year, and fifty to seventy thousand less than the previous couple of years, so.
Are those broken down inside the revenue section by new growth?
No, the, the, just, you just see the real estate taxes, you don't see the calculation of the real estate tax. It's not in the budget anywhere, although I, so, the budget calculation, although it was submitted today, and it's on the website, is the five-year forecast. The budget calculation is on page two of that five-year forecast, so it'll be in your packets for next week. packets for next week. But the, the budget calculation of 1.6 million, that is the tax levy we did not go, did not increase this budget by. We did use new growth of 1.6 million, and then to get to the number that's in your book, we subtracted out the overlay for real estate taxes, which is estimated at 572,000. So in this, the personal and real, real estate numbers combined are 66.3 million, of which it's 6.6 million, 795 in personal property, and 59.5 million in real estate tax. And that's on page 13.
What is, what is our excess capacity currently?
And with, if this budget's approved, and without this 1.6 million, our excess capacity will be 3 million. Currently, it's 1,921,878.
Can you repeat the numbers slower?
1,921,878 is our current excess capacity before this budget's passed. With this budget, not using the 2.5% increase, it increases by 1,680,272. So now our new number would be 3,602,150.
I know that we, we did not raise to the levy a couple of years ago. I think we went to like $500,000. If my memory serves me correctly, the other two years, I believe we did go to the levy maximum. Is that correct?
We, in FY, I have 13, I'm sure 12 I remember, 11, I'm not sure about 11, but 12, I believe we went to the max. 13, we went to the max. 14, we went to the max. 15, we did not do the 2.5% increase, which was 1,472,383. Then in FY 16, we did go to the max, so the excess capacity was approximately the same. And then last year, we left, we left 500, roughly $500,000, which went from 1.4 million to 1.9 million in excess capacity, and that's where we are today.
So we're at the 3.6 million dollars essentially over, over two years?
Three. I, you know, one, one, two years with no 2.5, and then last year with less 500,000. So there's three years that, that did not go to capacity to make up the 3.6 million.
I have significant comments to make about this. I'm going to hold that off for now. I'm not sure if tonight's the right night or with the full council, so I'll give me a chance to think about that. In the meantime, are there councils who wish to speak on the revenue section, as I try to make my mind whether I want to talk about this tonight? Mr. Vasquez?
Yes, I just want to be able to confirm, because this is where most of the questions are going to come from residents. And I know usually I rely a lot on Mr. Rynello and Mr. Alexi Vega specifically for real estate tax. We have, we were able to go up to 1,680,000 in new taxes. However, given the fact that this budget doesn't include the 2% levy amount that we could go up to, we are not going that route. And as a result of that, it will go towards the excess capacity, which is currently 1.9 million. If we were to add the 1.6 that we're not going to raise this year, that will bring us up to 3.6 once the budget is approved.
Yes.
Okay? So with that say, with that said, the new growth estimated for this year is 1.6 million dollars, which is showcasing the real estate tax increase. So that's not, that doesn't mean that we are increasing taxes to residents, but rather, new growth means that there's going to be new constructions and/or additions to the property that you currently own today. So we are not charging...
A lot of personal property for businesses add assets and so forth. Primary, a lot of our new growth is related more to the personal property than to the real estate, actually, historically.
And finally, we have an overlay on the amount of 572,000. So the overlay, in other words, that means an abatement, if someone came back to the city, we will have some funding set aside in case an abatement process goes through. So the money that we're putting aside is 572,000?
We probably should stop calling it overlay, because nobody knows what that means, but it's a reserve for abatements and exemptions. Abatements, if you think your property tax is too high, you can come in, the assessors will take it up. Exemptions are for the elderly and others that have an exemption, veterans and whatever is exempt by statute. And so we can provide for that in this budget, so it's a reserve.
So, so I'm glad that you brought that up. Overlay and abatement is exactly, it will go towards the same fund, it's not two different accounts, because every year I get the same question asked by residents.
We should stop using the term overlay, because it doesn't really, it's an old term. I guess we have a habit of using it, we should not call it overlay. It's a reserve for abatements and exemptions, and most people understand what an abatement means. They may not know what an exemption means, but abatement's usually, people might, are familiar with that term, but it is one account for abatements and exemptions. And just this year, when you mentioned accounts, they changed the law in November of, of 2016. We used to have to keep FY 18's exemption accounts separate from 17, from 16, and so forth. The, as of November 7th of 2016, they passed some legislation, so it's all just one account now. All of the years are just reserved for abatements and exemptions, and they are now combined.
I think that's very important for the residents to know that we're speaking about the same thing that you will get to hear back in, you know, when January comes around. I do have two questions outside of the personnel and real estate tax, hotel and meals tax. Does the state get a cut of this, or how does the hotel and meals tax comes into the city?
This, I think, was, we passed before I arrived. I think that one of the first things the fiscal overseer did when he came in 2010 was had the, requested that the council approve the optional tax for hotel, meals, and meals. And it's an op, it's an additional tax that the communities take a vote on if the council approves it. The state will add another, and I don't know what it is here. I'm sure one of our assessors probably knows, Alex is here, I think he knows what the percentage is, but I think it's 0.75 or, or, you know, something of the tax, and it is collected by the state. So when somebody goes, gets a hotel, they add, if we pass that local option tax, they add that to the state sales taxes. The state collects it all and kicks back the 0.75, or collects it for us and sends us a check quarterly.
It comes back in the form of a reimbursement.
It comes quarterly, yes. And it's, and there's also another, a meals tax, local option increase, again, it's 25, is it 25 or 75? It's 75, a 0.75% on, on all the meals taxes in town. The vendors already have to remit it to the state, so the state will, will tack that on and then turn it over to us, so we don't have to go collect it.
Okay. Thank you. In terms of taxes and excise, I don't have any further questions, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else, on the revenue side, anybody else have any questions or comments? Mr. Abdou?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Rynello, with respect to revenues under taxes and excise, line 4150, the motor vehicle excise tax, we had a spike in registered vehicles. Why the assumption of over $1 million in new?
We have, as you can see, the motor vehicle excise in the past year was 4.7 million. We had 4 million, we received 4 million the year before. I have, may have a few other years, but motor vehicle excise, the actual, we sent out bills in excess of this amount. This is what we estimate to collect next year in motor vehicle excise. And we have, I think it's, we have an awful lot of vehicles in the city.
It's over 50,000 now.
Yeah, it's over 50,000 registered vehicles, all paying excise taxes, tremendous amount, but it has historically grown.
I'm talking about the city.
And so, and for this year, you know, last year, we only budgeted 3.5 million in motor vehicle excise, but we have already collected over 3.6 million, and there's a couple of months to go in this number, so we'll, we'll far exceed that. And so for next year, we're counting on 4.6 million in motor vehicle excise to support this budget.
Thank you. And that's already been, that's bills, so that's a pretty solid number. Second of three questions, back up on the top end of the general fund, line 46, state revenue. Why, what is the drop of 502,000? It's not much, but just, the state's revenue issues kind of coming home to us, or?
No, it's usually, this is net of assessments, so it's usually, let me just pull up my cherry sheet, I think I have it here. But it's usually tuition reimbursements or something related to the school aid. Just give me a second, I think I can. So I can just tell you, see if I can see, net, our assessments went up 3 million and our state aid, I'm sorry, our assessments went up 23.6 million is the latest, out Senate Ways and Means for cherry sheet charges, if you will. And it was 22.4 million last year, so it's a, the assessments went up 1.2 million, and our state aid went up roughly, roughly 2, about 2 million, just a little under 2 million, so that's the difference. The assessment charges went up a little bit more than the aid increased, and that's the 700, or 500,000 decrease overall, as mainly the one that increased was the charter school sending tuition went from 20.5 million to 21.5 million, so that was increased a million. The cherry sheet aid, or chapter 70 aid, did go up roughly 1.4 million, and the unrestricted local government aid did go up about 800,000 or so. But between the sending tuition and the choice tuition and the other cherry sheet charges, the net is up half a million, or down a half a million over the prior year.
Are you looking for more of an answer?
No, I think I got that. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Rynello. Final question. The, the top line, the taxes and excise, and you've hit on some of it. We're assuming a 3.5 million dollar increase in this budget. Can you just generally characterize what the assumption's based on?
Again, and right up, and that line item, the detail of that line item is right below on page 13, so you can see all the changes to the right. It equals 3.5 million, so there's an increase of personal property tax of 500, real estate 1.7, 1.1 million in real estate tax, and a little bit of the 125,000 for interest and penalties on taxes, cost of taxes, those are some additional collections that we collect on the taxes. And urban development, corporate excise is a slight decrease, because some of those, I think they're chapter 120 way, 1A projects came offline, so they come back on the tax rolls, but they're decreased from, this is an item that the state kind of collects for us and remits it to us. So once they fall off the rolls after, I think, 40 years, they come back on the tax rolls, and so that line item decreased 205,000. And then we have the hotel motel tax, increased 5,000, and the meals, increase of 107,000.
Thank you, Mr. Rynello. Thanks, Chairman.
Any other comments, my members? I just want, want to make a comment, a couple of comments. One is on the motor vehicle registration excise tax. This is more of a comment. I do have data, which I'm trying to download off my phone real quick, but I'm not able to get it as quickly as I'd like, but the summary is that there's been a dramatic incline in the number of vehicles, which is again, referenced by the, the steady incline in revenue projections and revenue we received on motor vehicle excise tax. Now that might sound great, because the city is bringing in more money, but if you take that, if you go a little bit deeper into what that number means, it means that we have more and more automobiles in our city. And what does more and more automobiles mean in our city? For a city councillor, two things comes up directly. One is parking, because I hear about parking all the time, I can't find a place to park my car. And the reality is, is that we have more and more cars, so that's one suggestion as to what's happening. And the, the second thing is the amount of time it takes to get through our city, and the wear and tear that cars have inevitably on our roads, et cetera. But it takes a longer time, because there's more vehicles, to get from point A to point B, which then, as my colleagues are now very prone to hearing, about all the developments that we're going to be seeing in our city that have already have happened, and significant developments that are going to be going through, we will be seeing more and more cars in our city, and the amount of money that we're receiving may not be ample enough money to be able to offset the services that are going to be required of, of the city to provide to residents who have these new cars, whether those services be education, which is the big ticket item, two or three children perhaps in a unit, brand new. Our school system is bulging at the seams, we're going to need to build new schools. We've already in the midst of doing that. Not only that, but also, I've already mentioned the, the, already mentioned the, the impact it has on parking in neighborhoods, as well as congestion in our city. So it's a steady drumbeat. I am, I hope that my colleagues will pardon the repetition, but sometimes it needs to be said repeatedly, so that as we make decisions, they're, it's in the forefront of our minds. I'm not sure you have a comment on that, but I can go on to number two. The number two is the, the taxes, the real estate tax. Thank you for the explanation, thank you for letting us know, in layman's terms, what it means now. Now, we've received, as, as others have mentioned, a budget without any new increases, and I will tell you, that's a huge hit for the people that I represent. Nobody wants to pay more taxes. I was at a Mount Vernon Neighborhood Association meeting, and the mayor made a comment that we're not raising taxes, and the entire room, the entire room broke out into applause, thought that was fantastic. And I know when he said that to the Colonial Heights Neighborhood Association, warm applause there as well. There's not a one of us who wants to pay more taxes, I can assure you and I can trust you. It's not a political winner. We like to, we like to keep our money, don't we? We don't want to, we don't want to give it to the government. We don't trust those people. They're going to take it, and who knows what the heck's going to go on once they take our money. So we'd rather have it in our own pockets. I totally get that. On the flip side of that, however, is when we get phone calls from people saying, what about our parks? What about the various services? What about, why can't you get more? Why can't you fund the city clerk's office like you wanted to? Why couldn't you give more to the recreation department, that they can be more, what about the library? What about the cemetery? Why can't you have more stuff there? So we don't have to, every springtime, keep our fingers crossed, thankfully, people are doing a really good job with what they're trying to do, but they're making, they're somehow making it many times happen. What about our fire department? Well, I mean, we go on and on about services, but it seems like it's hard to have it both ways. And so I think that it's a political decision that's been made. I'm not, my sense is that, is that if we're going to, if we're going to go with the applause and say we're not raising taxes, there is a consequence, I think, for that, which is we may not be able to fund as many things as we would like to. I would like to see, in this budget, our parks being cleaner. I'd like to see more inspectional services offers being hired. I'd like to see more enforcement being done, off hours, on the weekends. I don't want my kids having to see needles in the park. There are certain things I'd like to see happen. But I know with the limitations that we have in our budget, that that's not going to happen. So when my residents call me up and say, what are you doing about X, Y, and Z, I come across sounding kind of mealy-mouthed, saying, well, we don't have the money for it. across sounding kind of mealy mouthed, saying, well, we don't have the money for it. Well, they're not happy when I give that answer, but they're pretty thrilled when I say we're not paying more for taxes. So it's a very difficult juxtaposition, isn't it, to have to explain? And I think that we need to be honest, we need to be honest, as we go through this process, that there is a give and take. There's pros and cons. So yes, good job for us, I guess, for not increasing taxes, but what that is, is certain cost. So people can say, well, just cut more, cut more somewhere else. I would, we're going to go through this budget, we're on day three. Our last day will be on Wednesday, on Monday of next week. I'm eager to see if there's any councillors, what their cuts are going to be, and where they're looking to cut. My sense is there's probably some places to cut, but my sense is that those cuts are probably, at least when you start talking about the various smaller departments, they're probably not there. At least big cuts, they may be 1,000 or 2,000. And that sounds like a lot of money, but when it's 300 million dollar budget, 1,000 dollars here, and 1,000, there's not a lot of money. But certainly, you know, we can certainly try to tighten things. There's always room for improvement. But I think it's, my comments are about the property tax. There was a decision that was made to send this down, and we're going to vote on this thing the way it is. But with that, I repeat, with that, are some, essentially some compromises to a certain extent. Thankfully, thankfully, two good things are working in our direction this year. Number one, the new growth that you talked about, the 1.6 million. And number two, what the overseer said, we're going to get more money through the cherry sheet, through federal aid, to the tune, if I remember correctly, between, it was a 400,000 to 1.6 million, is that what, is that what we're looking?
The Senate Ways and Means did allocate approximately a million dollars or more to the schools. I have it here. Just colored papers, I should be able to see it. Actually, I have this slide as well, and I think it was 900, 900 some odd thousand net increase for the school, between the governor's proposal and the Senate Ways and Means.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And I'm not sure how that, I guess I'm having trouble balancing the budgets, I don't know whether the Senate Ways and Means would, is going to go through, but it was an increase of, I don't have the net, but it's in the presentation that I oversee, I think it was 900 some odd thousand.
So I think if I have this, if I'm reading this, and if I am understanding correctly, we will have an increase of between 441,000 and 990,000 in potential budget capacity. And that would be, that's not baked into this, that is not baked into this budget. Am I correct on that?
It is not. When we built the budget, we had, pardon me, when we built the budget, we had the governor's proposed budget in March, and that's the number that we, the school and we have agreed on, to use the governor's proposed budget, so they could count on building their budget with something concrete. And then if the House Ways and Means, or Senate Ways and Means comes out with a decrease or an increase, we kind of disregard that, and wait for the final cherry sheet, because as I just indicated, I think 900,000 is what the Senate Ways and Means would like to add to the, pretty much all for the schools. But I'm not sure, when the budget finally gets passed, that's going to hold, because they have such a hole in the budget right now. So, and it may be, back to the governor's proposal, might be somewhere near House Ways and Means, which might be, maybe it'll mean 400,000. But, you know, there always is a difference between what the governor proposes, and what the House Ways and Means, and Senate, and finally, the legislature as a whole finally passes.
But the bottom line here is that there's, we are pretty, we are assured, as much as we can be, that within the House, the governor, and the Senate, that we are going to get an additional 400,000 in cherry sheet revenues, additional, that we have not baked into this budget.
Well, again, I think that it may come back to the governor's budget.
Which is 400,000, right?
Maybe no, well, the governor's budget over the prior year, yes. I take that back.
Right. So, anyway, I just, I just, it's a little, it, no one likes talking about it, because it's not politically palpable, no one likes talking about taxes, because it's not palpable. We're, we are at the, unlike the federal, and unlike the state, we're where the rubber hits the road. We are the, we are the government that provides the services. When people call us up about a road, about a sidewalk, about the water, about police, about fire, about whatever the issue is, it comes right here. It doesn't go to the state rep, it doesn't go to our US Congresswoman, it does not go to US Senator, it clearly doesn't go to the president, it doesn't go federal or state, it comes right here. We are the folks at this level, and the people that work for you, and in this building, in our municipal buildings, that offer the services that their tax dollars pay for. There's nothing closer, there's no more accountability than what we're doing here tonight, and for this process. So I'll stop there. I think I said what I had to say, and I may repeat that again, a little bit, not as much at the full council meeting, because I think that the people that I represent, I think, need to know, at least where I stand on this issue, so. But thank you for allowing me. On the revenue side, I'll stop there. Anybody else, on any part of the revenue side at all? Any comments or questions regarding it? If not, Mr. Rynell, please continue.
Okay. So I'm just in the, back to the budget finance, page, page 28, which has all the divisions which I spoke about, that are under me. I have the department heads for each of these departments are here tonight, if you have any specific questions about their operations, I can bring them to the podium. But as far as their budget goes, the budget is pretty lean. As I said, overall, there's only a 57,000 increase for, on a combined 2.8 million dollar budget. And that increase is primarily, 50,000 of that increase is for the IT department, and contractual increases in our ERP system, there's about a 20,000 increase for that. And we also need to purchase, we have a lot of, you know, regularly try and replace certain amounts of our computers. We have quite a few PCs that are over five years old, some of them are seven years old, so we try and replace a certain number of them each year. So that's the highlight of the division. There aren't a lot of increases in any of the, my departments have report to me, except for the information technology, which has software vendor commitments, is primarily what we're looking for, and 30,000 of an increase in operating supplies, to purchase additional computers and other necessary hardware. And just as a comment relating to the IT, we are on a three or four-year plan of replacing all of the, or much of the IT infrastructure. We replaced about 250,000 last year, mainly the mainframe, most of the mainframe was replaced. It was long in the tooth, it was beyond its useful life. And in last year's CIP, we did approve, and we did get phase one of this project completed. And the CIP that was resented this year, there's a continuation of that for another 250 to 300,000 or so, I don't remember what we, what made it in, but it was approximately 250,000 for this year, to replace a lot of the equipment at the police and fire department. And then next year, we hope to replace the, there's a roomful of computer, bank of hardware in City Hall, that'll be the third phase. So there's quite a bit of computer infrastructure in the city that goes unseen. But most of the equipment at the library last year was switched out, and so our IT infrastructure is far safer today than it was a year ago.
Mr. Rynell, we went through the comm controls, I don't really have much comment on that, purchasing, I don't have, I don't have much comment, maybe others do. But I do have a question regarding the IT department.
Yep.
Is there somebody on your staff that I could speak with tonight regarding specific issues on that?
I do have Louis, our acting IT director, but hopefully, between the two of us, we can answer your questions.
Hello, Mr. Santiago, how are you?
Louis Santiago?
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, thank you. I like to get a sense as to where we are as a city, in our technological front. I think last year, at this time, we talked about we're going to get a new website up and running. That was supposed to happen halfway through the fiscal year. I don't, has that happened? I don't think.
It's in process.
That's happened, so I want to get an update on that. And overall, I want to get a picture from you, as our posture on technology in our city, and what are we doing to push the envelope into advanced technology usage?
Yeah, like Mark started saying, we are on a five-year plan, capital improvement plan, that we started last year with 250,000. We did change the main core at the library, which is where every location connects. And this, and this year, with another 250, we know, we're going to change all the equipment at the police department, fire departments, all the fire station, and probably some here at City Hall and all the locations. And about the website, we are, we already did the RFP. The first draft of the design, we have a meeting, I think next Tuesday, but Kendry's in the, is in the committee. So that's the deadline for that, I think it's around December, that we're going to have our new website up. We did outsource the website, you know, we were doing it before, and we did outsource it. And to respond to your question that, what is, you know, our vision for the IT department, our IT department hadn't had any changes for the last 11 years. It was 11 years ago when we started basically the city fiber network, and we connect every location through the city. And like Mark said, we are asking for a little bit more this year, to change all the computers, because basically, we still have seven years old computer here, and we try every year of changing that. And with that capital improvement plan, in the next three years, we're going to be on top of the line of technology, because we're going to have every single equipment brand new. We should do this like every 10 years.
You might just want to add, because of all the computer viruses and so forth that have hit the world, we did replace our firewall a year and a half or so ago, so the world cry, or whatever that latest virus was, we were, we were prepared.
Yeah, three years ago, two years ago, when our old boss left, we decided to change everything. We decided to change our old firewall, which is what prevent any attacks outgoing and incoming from us. So we changed that, we have our new firewall. The latest virus that happened, the one that cried, wouldn't really affect us, because we are, you know, pretty much protected and getting updates all the time. We do get hit, we're RASMware all the time here, but because of the system we have, I'm able to recover all of those files without pain within hours. Would be like an hour. We get hit with RASMware probably two or three times a month, and the users don't even notice that we did, because we have a system in place that, you know, we save the backups for 30 days. So basically, if a RASMware hit today, as soon as I notice that RASMware, I eliminate it, restore the files, and we up and running in no time.
One of the departments that I believe, in just being on the council for as long as I have, that needs attention technologically, is the inspectional services division. Last time I checked, unless things have changed dramatically recently, they still have the old file by card system, where they go in there and they shuffle the cards to find things, and these cards get worn and torn, and probably hard to read and illegible.
And all that.
Seriously with the question, are we moving at all, if we haven't already, are we moving at all toward trying to bring that department, which needs that equipment and that technology, I think rather desperately? How close are we to getting them what they need, if we haven't already?
You know, it's good that you asked that, because they just trying to get in, they just got into City Hall system with, with users who come in, and there's going to be a kiosk, a computer there, that they're going to be able to, you know, file for a building permit on a computer, and pay on the computer. We also, on the new website, there is a part, just for inspectional service, where they're going to be able to have all their application, and all the things, fillable online, and I will get to it. The new website is part of, we tried to do the new website, that each department will have their, their own little subdepartment, and they will basically do whatever they're doing paper now, to do it on the city website. And inspectional service is a big part of it.
One of the things that our residents are doing more and more of is paying online. Can you talk a little bit about that? I personally have had some issues, I believe other councillors have had issues with payment of certain excise bills, et cetera, online. Can we talk a little bit about the veracity of our online systems? And what troubles me a little bit is the user fee that sometimes is, and I understand why, I guess, but they're also oftentimes associated with the use of the credit card on there. Can you speak to that a little bit?
With, two years, two years ago, I mean, the city didn't use to take any credit cards in any departments. Two years ago, we started with City Hall system, just on, on the tax collector side. And within the two years, we've been expanding to inspectional service, community development, city clerks. So the idea is actually some, the City Hall system is actually going to put something in the parking lots now, too, where users are not going to be able to use cash, and you know, they're going to use a credit card. And about the fees, there's always, there will always be a fee related to credit card processing, you know, there was always would be. But we do have the option to pay with checks, and it's free, and it's as fast as, I mean, they will get that check next day, and it's free. So we do have the option for the users to pay with a check. You know, if you have a bank account, you probably have a debit card, don't pay with your debit card, pay with your check. It's free for them to do that, and it's the same speed.
It costs us 25 cents.
Yeah, it costs us 25 cents.
But we eat the 25 cents.
So can you quickly, just again, as a reminder, so I can repeat this back to my constituents, which of the bills are available to be paid through this system, through the check, electronic check, if you will, I think that's the right term?
On the, on the city's website, there's a link to City Hall Systems. And City Hall Systems is a vendor that's processing all these payments. We put that out to bid last year, I think they've been on maybe a year and a half or so ago. They came online, and so they could pay their real estate, their water, I'm just going to, but their real estate, their water bill, their excise tax, and that's, that's also through City Hall, so it's personal property, real estate, water sewer, excise tax, and then we do have some capability in some of the departments to take, to pay by credit card at a department as well, at the collector's office, at the inspectional services, and a few other departments.
What about?
Online, that's.
What about fines? If someone gets a parking ticket, if someone gets an inspectional services fine or violation, can they also pay this way?
I'm not sure about the fines with the parking ticket fines, I believe they can, they have, that's through the public parking, they have a website, so you can go online and appeal your ticket, they have an online system, appeal your ticket, pay your ticket, or I'm not sure about the inspectional services fines, because they don't issue very many of them.
And the police department fines as well, you wouldn't be able to pay that through there?
The police department fines are collected by the court, speeding tickets and things like that, so we don't, we get very few here at the city. Again, the fire department has some permits, so I think the fire department now has a credit card, so they can take credit cards out the fire department. Not sure if the police has capability of taking credit cards, whether they've asked for it or not. Does anybody, Kelly, do you know? If the police department has a, okay, not sure.
So to recap, personal tax, real estate tax, water, sewer, and excise tax, those are all available to be paid on the city website. If you use your routing number on your, on your checking account, that's going to be able to access that, and it's free for any constituent of ours to be able to pay any one of those bills. If they, if our constituent choose to use a credit card, there's going to be a surcharge of, was it a buck or two, or three or something?
It's a percent of the amount, or minimum, it's a minimum dot flat fee, or two or three percent of the transaction charge, two point something percent of the transaction charge.
I'm going to hold off my question on the parking garage and payment by credit cards there, until we get to that point. Any other questions on IT, until we move on to the next section? Rynell, continue, please.
Thanks, Louis. So the next department is the assessors department. There's very little change in that department. If you have any questions about the operations, Alexi Vega is here to answer any of your questions. On the last page, page 39, is revaluation, and that's actually a decrease of 5,000. That's a contractual arrangement with an outside service to help actually visit the properties and do an assessment of the properties themselves.
Can we talk a little bit about that real quick? I always get, I get confused about how often the assessments take place for a property owner.
Good evening, Alexi Vega, Sasa's office.
Mr. Vega.
Basically-
Basically for fiscal year 18, the assessors are going to be following all the property sales that were recorded at the Registry of Deeds as of January 1st, 2017. Property values are determined in three ways, is the sale comparison approach, what similar properties in your neighborhood have been selling for, what similar styles, characteristics, gross living area, et cetera. Sales comparison approach is used for residential properties, mostly singles, condos, twos and threes. Then you have the income approach to property, which is used for retail, commercial properties. And we use the income and expense approach for those types of properties. Then you have the cost approach, what properties would be constructed using today's material and labor costs.
So the question was, and just so I'm clear, it's I'm a property owner. How, when, over a course of a five-year period, how often will I have my property assessed? And does that mean someone's knocking on my door and coming in? Or does that mean someone's standing outside just taking a look at it? What does that mean?
It means two things. One is the sales or the assessments are determined on a yearly basis. And fiscal, and that began in fiscal year 2005, which the state mandated all the cities and towns to do interim year adjustments. Prior to that was every three years, which was a revale year. So as of 2005, we're doing reassessments every single year. With regards to home inspections on properties, unless a permit was issued or a sale was taken place in that calendar of the year, we will not be out in the property. If, but we will be out in the property every nine years, which is a cyclical inspection, which is also mandated by the state. And we've completed that cyclical inspection in fiscal year 2017. So it's either A, one in every nine years for a cyclical, or B, if there was a sale, we will be out there reviewing that sale to make sure our property record cards are correct. And if there's a huge discrepancy on the assessment and the sale price, there could have been a permit that was, well, work done to the house without a permit being issued. That's why you see a huge discrepancy in the sale price compared to the assessment. So about it.
So every nine years, I should expect, any one of us who owns property should expect a knock on the door?
Sure.
I'd like to come into your house and take a look at it.
Correct, and we work from 8:30 to 4:30 Monday through Friday and most folks are working. So if no one's home, we either leave a tag on the door or we'll put on the property record card, onsite inspection conducted, however, no entry was allowed. It's important to note that the homeowner does not have to allow the assessors to gain entry into the property. However, we will do our best to estimate exactly what is in your home compared to a property that's allowed us entry into their home. So for instance, two similar style homes on Park Street neighborhood, one allowed us entry and we see that there was a sale, a solid sale. And we see hardwood floors, we see a finished, completely finished bathroom. We're going to definitely estimate that house that did not allow entry, the same exact model because we have the facts. And you, that's where you might see a huge assessment increase on your property. If that takes place, which is allowed by law, the assessors have to estimate based on solid facts and information that they obtained from other properties. Then the taxpayer was aggrieved and looks at their property record card and says, hold on, I don't have hardwood floors. My attic isn't finished, although we might see an air conditioner in the third floor attic. And we're saying, there's a reason for that air conditioner, we're going to just put down that it's finished. Now, if the taxpayer is aggrieved and finds something wrong with the property record card, that's when the abatement process begins. Once the abatement application is filed, we have 90 days to review the property. We would ask that we gain entry. If entry is denied, and that's the taxpayer is right, we'll deny the abatement application. The taxpayer then has a right to appeal at the appellate tax board. They have three months to appeal. If it goes to the appellate tax board, which is a quasi-court agency, the judge will mandate the taxpayer to allow the assessors entry. If they deny it again, the abatement is automatically denied. So there is a way to work around folks who don't want to allow the assessors into the property.
I want to move on to my question, but just quickly, how often does that happen?
Not often. It's very cooperative with the tax, the assessors and the taxpayer.
And I want to spend just a little bit of time on illegal apartments. When your assessors are going in there, or the appraisers are going in, they, they go to a place, it's a multi-tenant. It's supposed to be four apartments, they see six mailboxes on it rather than four mailboxes. So immediately your antenna would go up. Talk about the relationship, if any, between the Inspection Services Department in our city, which has the enforcement arm versus your office, which does not. You gather information and do appraisals, but you don't have enforcement capability. So can you talk a little bit about how you work with Inspection Services?
Absolutely, and there's a third department as well, which is DPW, which actually coordinates the garbage cans, garbage disposals. So basically if we're out in the field, we see what should be a two-family and it's four mailboxes. We automatically assess it as what we see. We really don't care if it's legal or illegal, but we'll note it on the property record card. So that two-family is now being assessed as a full family and you can imagine the increase from a two to a four. We then report that to the Inspection Services Department, whether it be Pat Ruiz or Peter Blanchett, to determine what's going on with that property. And again, report it to the DPW if it's the flip side of it. So if they're looking for four garbage cans, there's only two and it's an illegal unit, that triggers all three departments to act. You know, we don't have to wait for an onsite inspection to take place. We also work with, very closely with bankers and appraisers. So for instance, a home is going to be up for sale and it's an illegal four-unit. The appraiser's out there doing a bank appraisal or a fee appraisal. They come back to the assessors' office, right away notice that I'm, my, my report is for a four-family. The assessors have it as a two-family, work stops. They actually verify with the Inspection Services that appraisal cannot go through, that sale cannot go through. And that's what triggers some enforcement and code violations from the Inspection Services. So that happens quite often and we do have a really good working relationship with all three departments.
Some unaware of that relationship, can, can you give me just an estimate as to, over the course of an average year, how many referrals you have at DPW and Inspection Services when your appraisers, appraisers see this?
Between the appraisers, DPW, taxpayers complaining about neighbor just coming into the assessors' office notifying us, I would say maybe several dozen.
Several dozens, you're talking like around 50-ish, the course of a year?
Yeah, less than 50. Not much, and the activity level is not as drastic as most folks think. One neighborhood might see it more than another neighborhood. I might not get any complaints from the Towah Hill or Prospect Hill neighborhood, but I would get it from, say, the Park Street area, et cetera, and it could be vice versa. I don't track them, it gets handled pretty quickly. I'm actually doing one tomorrow. This gross living area on the appraisal is, there's a discrepancy and the appraiser called me.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm going to follow up on this kind of questioning with Inspection Services when they show up. But it's good to know that there is a relationship between your office and DPW and that, and it seems like there's some enforcement. I'm not sure how robust enforcement is, what our capacity is for it, if we're light, if we're heavy, I don't know. So that's the kind of question I'll have for Inspection Services when they arrive. I'm done with the assessors, any questions or comments on the assessors? Nope, well, thank you so much, Mr. Vega. Thanks for the good work you're doing, by the way, thank you. I believe we're at Treasurer's Office, Mr. Ryanell, 47 or 41?
Page, page 40 begins the Treasurer's Department, Treasurer and Collector. We have a Treasurer, a new Treasurer Collector, you met her, Kelly Oakes, she came in in late December. And she is the Collector slash Treasurer. So in her budget, the, just a couple of things of note in, in the, I believe it's in the Collector's side is the, we have a postage, printing and mailing is 76,000, no increase, but there is a 76,000 number for printing and mailing. And that is because we pay for the postage meter that's used by all city departments out of the Treasurer Collector's budget. Other than that, there are modest increases, contractual increases for wages and all the other line items are pretty much level funded.
My question regarding your entire situation is, in last year's overseer's overview of the department, one of the places he said that we needed to put some personnel was in the Budget Office and the Treasurer's Office and in your office. Have you met that, have you met that request?
There is a, in the Budget Finance Office, there is a Budget Analyst position that's vacant. Although I do have, I'm hoping to fill that shortly. I do have an interview process, so I'm hoping I have a candidate for that shortly. And in, in the Treasurer's Office there, they do have an employee just this week passed away. At a very young age, so that position's vacant and will be filled shortly.
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
Any questions from the committee members? Want to move on, Mr. Ryanell?
Sure, on here is the Fiscal Overseer, he doesn't report to me, but I can review his budget. He just asked that, let me just find, I think he's on page, fiscal, page 72. So he just requested, he had 75,000 for contractual, professional services last year and he's requesting 50,000 this year. The 75,000 last year, we, was put in for a parking study. He requested out of his budget, well, the bids just came in at a little, little more than we, a little more than 75,000. So we're trying to find the funds so we can sign that contract and get that parking study initiated. But next year, he requested 50,000 in case there's something else that he wants to study next year. He wants to have that available and under the Chapter 58 statute, we have to give him what he asked for. That's part of the statute, so we can't really cut his budget. Not that we would want to, but I just wanted to make that as a comment. So that's really all there is to the Fiscal Overseer's budget. I would like to add, and I think I've added this before, by the way, he doesn't take a salary for doing the Fiscal Overseer thing. And as you can see from his presentation the other night, he spends quite a bit of time on the city of Lawrence. It's awfully good of him to not hit us up for that. So if I can just get to the next item on the agenda is debt service, which I'm going to point you to two places. Yeah, to get the, first of all, the debt service in your budget book is in two places, so it's going to be on page, debt service on page 163. And that's just the, the total amounts that I'm asking for. And then on, under the appendix is the detail of the debt service itself. And there's general fund debt service in Appendix A, which is the very last page of your budget book. And then there's a debt service for the water sewer, which is Appendix B. So the details to our debt are on that page. One of the things I just wanted to explain in this debt service is that the debt service that is on Exhibit A and the debt service that's in the budget, we've asked for a little bit more in the budget than what the Appendix A asked for and that's to maintain, to meet our capital plan. So there's a few hundred thousand more than necessary in this line item to fund the proposed capital plan. So it is all part of our plan. We, we, this, this debt service line item will increase every year during the five-year, for every year in perpetuity until we reach 7% of our net operating revenues, which Sean mentioned, the overseer mentioned the other night. That's our target, we're presently at 6% of, of net operating revenues. And our financial policies, we're committed to increasing that debt service amount to 7% of revenues over time. And as, if you recall from one of Sean's slides, we do have a lot of debt falling off and then we're increasing our debt capacity so that allows us to do substantial amount of capital improvements. And the capital improvement plan that we filed last week is before the council, that'll come up for review shortly.
Can I stop you right there? Help me understand it one more time, the 6% versus 7% debt service. The goal is to increase our debt service from six to seven?
Yes, it's to make a commitment to our infrastructure. We need to increase debt service, but we can't, you know, increase it in one year to the next. So we made a commitment to do incremental increases and get from 6% to 7% by the year 2022.
And the goal here is to increase our capital expenditures. And if you increase the amount of money that we borrow, then you increase the amount of debt service that we have. Am I going down the right place here?
We're going to increase the mortgage payment, if you will. We're going to make a commitment to increase our mortgage incrementally each year until we hit 7% of net operating revenues, which is, which is about where, for government, general government, that's a good, a good fiscal practice. And that allows us to maintain our infrastructure going forward.
So here's what I'm missing and help me connect the synapse. Is, is the debt service, the amount of money that we're setting aside for loan authorization for capital improvement? Or is that the interest on the loans?
It's both, principal and interest is the debt service, principal and interest. So, so before you, and this budget is $12,358,396 for debt service and that's on page 164. The, some of that debt is related to school buildings and some is related to general government debt. And again, the detail for those looking at home is in Appendix A, which is the next to last page in the budget document. And all of the principal and interest portions of payments are delineated for each of the outstanding bonds that we have. Also included in, in this line item are the deficit notes. We do have, turn my book sideways, we do have approximately 20 million remaining. We borrowed 27.4 million, we have approximately 20 million remaining in deficit notes. We have about 14 or 15 years remaining to pay it off. And so we do have deficit notes or principal that we're going to pay in fiscal year 18 of 1.290, plus interest of a few hundred thousand. So that's the highlight of the debt service. Have any questions, I'll answer them for you.
Do we also have questions for each of them? Questions, comments on debt?
Yeah.
Mr. Vasquez, Professor Vasquez?
This is more through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Anello, when I, when I look at the, at the date of issue and expiration date for some of the borrowing that we've done, it's a bit confusing. Let's say for instance, when we look at, if you look down the renewal, deficit borrowing notes, renewals, going down, police vehicles, it says that the date of issue was on August 18th of 2015. But the expiration date is the 1st of September, but it's a five-year loan. So how could the expiration date be within one year when it's a five-year loan?
Yeah, no, we, we did, we recently borrowed that, so the, the expiration date was not updated. I think that carried over from last year. That was a temporary note last year and it did expire 9/116. It was, we authorized the police vehicles and the repair to the fire station, the fire remodeling and the ladder truck. All three, all three of those items were 2,499,000.
Yeah, I remember that.
And, and it was a, when the bond was authorized, we temporarily borrowed a note. And, and it was a, when the bond was authorized, we temporarily borrowed a note. We purchased those items because we didn't know what the actual cost of the purchase would be. We purchased those items and once we knew the finite sum, we borrowed, we then did a permanent borrowing and we did that on nine-one-sixteen. So this is just a typo on, on Appendix A. That was, the police vehicles were borrowed for five years, so from nine-one-sixteen, that should be expiring in two thousand twenty-one. And, and for the ladder truck, I think that was a twenty-year borrowing period and the municipal fire station is also over twenty years. So I'll have to correct that.
So the, the three dates are, that are incorrect just for, for the public is, on the police vehicles, expiration date shouldn't be September first of two thousand sixteen. Fire ladder truck is the same date and fire station's remodeling is also the same date. One is a five-year loan and the other two are twenty-year loans.
Can you say that one more time?
Okay.
For, for me?
So we have police vehicles. The expiration date will be in two thousand twenty.
So two thousand, oh, I see. September first, two thousand twenty?
Would it be September first of two thousand twenty or two thousand twenty-one, given that it was renewed?
I believe that would be, because we borrowed it nine-one-sixteen, should be twenty-one. It was a five-year loan.
So the, for the fire ladder truck, it will be?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-six?
Should be thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Twenty thirty-six and for the fire station, it should also be twenty thirty-six and not twenty thirty-five.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rynell, for that clarification.
And the municipal purposeful loan would be five, it's already been paid, right?
Yeah, that's a half, that, that should be a half a year loan. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see. Next I have Risk Management. If there's no other questions on debt service, I'll move to Risk Management.
Yeah, I just have a quick comment about, about the, the debt schedule. You know, the one thing that struck me about the overseer, he spoke for twenty minutes or so and was very powerful, had a lot of stuff. The thing that struck me the most was his discussions regarding debt, the debt schedule, the debt management and our ability as a city to go ahead and do the capital expenditures that we, that we need going forward. So I just, I think it's important that we just highlight that just a little bit more because he saw tremendous value and I think that you're aptly following his recommendations and moving in that direction. So I think it's a great job.
Yeah, we, the capital improvement plan, we, we, the council did last year's capital improvement plan and we have the updated one with a, a new five-year plan. Basically just, last year's was seventeen to twenty-one, this year is eighteen to twenty-two. So we've updated it, added a year and we'll continue to do that every year. And, and, and I think he had a slide, I'm pulling it out, here it is, right here. On page, if anybody has their slide, for page thirteen of last year, that was a slide that showed a lot of our debt was falling off and, and we need to kind of replace that and make a commitment to our city's infrastructure. And, and as we all know, I think over the last, again, because of two thousand ten and other issues, financial problems that the city may have had, we did not make that commitment. So we do have a, we have not added, except for the Water and Sewer Commission, we haven't done a lot of bonding since I've been here. We've done a few, but prior to when I, prior to two thousand ten or, and, and since two thousand ten, we've done very little borrowing. So all the borrowing that was existing out there is now starting to fall off. We've, it's being paid up. So we're freeing up a lot of capacity in the general operating budget to refix some of our infrastructure or replace it. And, and as, as you saw in last year's CIP plan and this year's CIP plan, there's a lot of need that's out there. Quite a few, we have a couple of schools where we know we have to replace. Thankfully, those schools will be reimbursed if they get approved. Well, one has been approved and another one is pending, you know, seventy to eighty percent reimbursement, which would be great. But there's also streets, sidewalks that we're trying to make a commitment in this capital plan to start putting some money into our sidewalks and at least through the Chapter Ninety program, continue the street work and then also try and improve some of our parks and make a commitment to some of those parks. And a lot of our school buildings need boilers, roofs and, and other items. So there's quite a bit of that in this next plan that you guys will be considering in the next couple of weeks. That's just the plan and then we have to come back for appropriation or loan authorization vote, which we expect sometime in August, the same as last year. So once we're, now that we're, we're getting on an annual process, an annual, annual loan authorization program, that's what the receiver was looking for. The city make a commitment to our facility so we don't have a dire need, but we try and keep up with it. And if we stick to that, seven percent of, of debt service, of net operating revenues will always be, and that's our financial policies, will always be making a commitment to our infrastructure, hopefully, and not go seven or eight years without a loan authorization and letting our buildings kind of, city facilities fall behind. So that's why, that's why he was so emphatic about a capital improvement plan and also hiring a, which he mentioned, a, someone to manage. We have so many projects now. We need a professional on staff to manage those projects and make sure they come in on time and on budget.
Let's ask you one loaded question.
Yep.
Do you ever foresee an opportunity for us to, to bond an entire new police department?
Oh, a police building?
Police headquarters.
Police, yeah, headquarters. I know there's quite a bit of talk about that. If we could, I, I just think other projects are, are getting in the, getting in the way, but I, I think there, obviously the need for that is, is imminent. I know the mayor's been trying to work with the governor and anybody else who will listen to see if we can accelerate that process, but I, I don't think it's that far away.
Thank you.
And I think the other financing uses, I think is the, or Risk Management, I'm sorry, is the next item. And that's just fire insurance and insurance on our fire vehicles and auto insurance on our fleet. It increased a little bit. We did buy fire, we had a couple of new fire trucks, so the fire insurance.
What page, Mr. Rynell?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm on page one seventy.
Thank you.
There's fire insurance of fifty-six thousand, five hundred, which is generally for our fire department fleet. And we did put a pumper truck and we will be putting a ladder truck on soon. So we've increased that line item ninety-five hundred dollars. So we're, we hope that'll be enough to anticipate the insurance. This insurance is a calendar year, so we only, we know what it is through December, but I don't know what it is from January to June. So we do, someone in my office does a best guess as to what those, historically what those amounts would be. So on auto insurance, we do have a few new fleet items, so that increased seventeen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. But, so the line item for Risk Management is two hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred. And then last night, line item, our item on our agenda, if there's no questions about Risk Management, is Other Financing Uses. And the item here is four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six sixty-seven on page one seventy-two. And this is the, under our, I call it the bailout legislation, Chapter fifty-eight, which allowed us to borrow deficit financing. One of the provisions was that we commit one and a half percent of our prior year's tax, tax revenues to a capital reserve. And historically, we've taken that out of free cash. Last year, we took seventy-five percent out of free cash and twenty-five percent in the operating budget. This year, we're taking fifty percent in the operating budget and fifty percent out of free cash. And that's the overseer's recommendation is to wean ourselves so that after a five-year period, it'll be one hundred percent funded by the city budget. So this four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six sixty-seven is the Chapter fifty-eight required reserve, which we built into the operating budget. And before you today was an order for transfer from free cash, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six sixty-eight, the other fifty percent from free cash into this capital reserve. And this capital reserve is used in the capital improvement plan. And it satisfies our statutory requirement.
And just as an interrupt, there's a twenty-year loan authorization, correct?
It's not a loan, it's just a, it's a pay-as-you-go capital. It's, it's a, an appropriation into a capital reserve and then we come back to the council. We want to use, it's roughly a million dollars, a little shy of a million dollars. And we've had this every year and we come back to the council and ask that we'd like to, I think last year we used pretty much all nine hundred thousand for school boilers. I think City Hall boiler and generally school boilers and, and I think Martha Velez had a, at the senior center, had a roof or air conditioning and there was a number of other items we used the capital reserve money for. But we come back down to the council for a vote to take it out of capital reserve and put it into a, either an operating budget or a capital budget based upon the approval of the council. And that's part and parcel to the capital improvement plan.
Where is the number that we paid back that, was it twenty-six? I always get the numbers confused. Twenty-six million, thirty million? This was during the last administration that we had to do the?
The deficit notes.
Yeah.
We borrowed the bailout legislation. We were authorized to borrow up to thirty-five million. We borrowed, actually, when the overseer came in, Bob Noons, we borrowed twenty-seven point four million. And we're down to approximately twenty million.
Is that in this budget anywhere?
The debt service for that is and, and that was in the, in Appendix A and it was one million, two hundred and ninety thousand in principal we're going to repay. So we're, we're, we're on an, we, that twenty-seven point four million was, basically it's one-year notes that renew and we borrowed for twenty-seven point four million, then we borrowed twenty-six, when that renewed, we borrowed twenty-six million and that's how we paid back the roughly a million dollars a year. And this FY eighteen budget, one, one million, two hundred and ninety thousand is scheduled to be paid, to reduce our deficit notes by one million, two hundred and ninety thousand. And then, of course, there's some interest that's owed on that, approximately twenty-one million.
When is that expi, that expiring?
And that should be paid off. We borrowed that in two thousand ten, so that should be paid off in two thousand twenty-nine or thirty. I have it, this exact date, but it's twenty years.
So, Mr. Vasquez, when you're here in two thousand twenty-nine, please celebrate that. Thank you.
I know that I'm, I'm the youngest here, but I don't plan on being here for, for the rest of my life.
I do, it, it is, actually, the final payment will be two thousand thirty-one. There'll be just some interest due.
You'll just finish your second term.
Hopefully I won't have gray hair by then.
I know I won't be around. And I believe that's all that was on our agenda for this evening.
It is. I should probably look at our next meeting. I did not do that yet. Hold on.
I have Monday night with?
Yeah, I'm scrambling.
Yep. DPW, ISD and a few others.
All right, so we have Monday, June fifth, we have another seven o'clock meeting. We have some big ones on here. DPW Inspection Services and with Inspection Services as Public Health, I think licensing comes under them, then there's CD. Why don't we do this, why don't we start off at seven o'clock with DPW? That'll probably, that's probably a good half hour at least, I'm thinking. Let's bring Inspection Services and that will include Public Health, Licensing at seven thirty, seven thirty to seven forty-five. How much time do you think DPW will take?
DPW will be more than thirty minutes.
Let's go seven forty-five for Inspection Services. And then the rest of that.
It's pretty much, oh, the Office of Planning and Development, so that would be Teresa Park and her staff. That covers community development, Office of Planning, Boards and Commissions and she handles zoning.
I think eight fifteen, eight, eight thirty, actually.
Sounds fair.
Eight fifteen. I think Inspection Services will be at least thirty minutes, thirty to forty-five minutes.
So let's just say eight thirty and if we get earlier, we'd earlier. So, Mr. Rynell, very simple, thank you very much for, for cc-ing me on the courtesy copy the other night. Let's proceed as follows. We will have Department of Public Works for the first tier at seven o'clock. Inspection Services, Public Health and Licensing at seven forty-five. And at eight thirty, the remainder, which includes community development, economic development, Office of Planning, Boards and Commissions, Zoning Board, Intergovernmental. If we do complete the Inspection Services a little bit earlier and individuals are here earlier, we may begin a little earlier, but they're under, because we're setting up these timeframes, they should not feel pressured to be here before then, but if they are here, we'll take them earlier if we're finished.
So you want me to send that email out tonight? I'll do that for you.
If you don't mind, that would be very.
CC you on it.
I think that worked out well. I think people are appreciative of not having to sit around if they don't have to. All right. Okay, so I think, gentlemen, I think we're done for the evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move?
Motion made.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Yes, sir.
That clock is weird.
It's twenty past nine.